Motion to go into executive session for G1 compensation of a public employee.
I was second.
We'll call Amy.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we can move to our Ms. Elias.
Yeah.
Did Janet have something she wanted to bring back? Or was it just a thing?
She has the lot of resources. And then you.
Two lights.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, we can go ahead and do these. Starting with the dog warden.
Yeah.
So everybody has the same place?
Yep.
These are journal entries, right? The dog warden.
That's a resolution.
That's a resolution. Oh, God, yeah, I'm sorry. Right here.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution acceptance of donations to the Office of the Portage County Dog Warden.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the recommendation for the appointment to the Portage County Local Emergency Planning LEPC authorizing the appointment of Robert Walker.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Do you want this at the beginning of the day? Just to figure the minutes?
It's okay. I probably should do it here while we're doing everything. Do I have a motion to approve the January 9th regular meeting minutes and the January 13th organizational meeting minutes?
Second.
I'll make a motion, sorry. Then you'll second me.
We'll call Amy.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, Portage County Board of Commissioners authorizing the appointment of Diane Furley and Heather Malarsik to Tax Incentive Review Council for the City of Kent.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Does someone want to move or do we move these?
Um, I can uh, I'll vote if the board commissioner acknowledges the receipt of the Portage County Investment Portfolio Report for December of 2019 as presented by the Portage County Treasurer.
Now, second.
We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move to authorize Commissioner Clyde to sign the equitable sharing agreement and certification for year ending 12/31/19 as presented by the Portage County Prosecutor.
Now, second.
We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move to acknowledge the receipt of the Portage County Investment Reconciliation for the month of December 2019 received on January 9th, 2020 and presented by the County Auditorium and County Treasurer.
Okay.
I was second. We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move to authorize Commissioner Kathleen Clyde, President of the Board, to sign the use of school facilities request form to use Maplewood Career Center on Thursday, February 13th, 2020 for the Portage County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management's Hazard Mitigation Planning Meeting. Maplewood Career Center has agreed to waive the $100 fee.
Now, second.
We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move to authorize Commissioner Kathleen Clyde, President of the Board, to sign the use of school facilities request form to use Maplewood Career Center on Thursday, April 16th, 2020 for the Portage County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management's Hazard Mitigation Planning Meeting. Maplewood Career Center has agreed to waive the $100 fee.
Now, second.
We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move to acknowledge receipt of the January 10th, 2020 certificate of the County Auditorium that the total appropriations from each fund do not exceed the official estimate resources for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020 as presented by the Portage County Auditor's Office.
Now, second.
We'll call Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Anybody see the bills?
Pardon me?
Bills? Is it listed on her sheet somewhere? Bills, wires, JVs?
Yeah, we did that with budget. They're, they're over there. Those are all, those are all passing in this like.
Okay.
I'm sure you have it.
Yeah, it's right here on that.
So we get a recess till 11:00 then? Does Janet have her journal entries ready?
Let's see if she does. She's not yet, and she was. I didn't hear say that, she did.
No, she was going back because she said that she needed more time because she had been in here so long.
So here you have the MOU, and this is the one we did in 16 for. There was a language okay? Over the top line. Is she on another one? She's on Kelly Services.
Does, did she give this or did John give you this?
Um, she had someone in her office.
Okay.
So she gave me that.
Let's hold off on this. This is a temporary employee and we'd be agreeing to contract with a temp agency. I just want to check on that before we authorize one specific temp agency. I'm just not familiar with that procedure, so let's move this one on the MOU that I think we're all good to go on and let's look into this a little bit.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the journal entry approving the memorandum of understanding between Portage County Water Resources and the Teesher Local Union Number 436 to add the Labor Industrial Pretreatment Program Coordinator position to Article 4 Recognition and Modified Appendix A wages presented by Water Resources Director Jane Reverend and Human Resource Director Janet Cook.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Yes. And let's recess until 11:00 for a public comment.
I'll be back.
We're good.
Getting close.
Okay.
If I'm no mad, I've been here about 10 minutes till.
It's okay.
You feeling better, Sabrina?
You seem to be a nice person.
I am.
Don't say that.
It's not in my ear. Yes, I am. I was there for like 10 days. I mean, it was bad. And I turned, ended up turning into a sinus infection. But you know what? I was fortunate because I was turning into a pneumonia. Yeah, and so I was fortunate. I thought that day. Yeah.
I'll be here every week.
Yeah, I just, I just still have a lot of medical appointments that I have to schedule work around.
Well, yeah, for me, it's uh.
But I'm seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and so.
I retired and I was able to start running the team.
When this is all over, because it's within the first quarter of the year.
Yeah.
Dealing with it.
And I got a chairman. Oh, somebody really hates me.
Because I put that hook in there.
So anyway, um, I started saying what was going on.
I've only seen stories about the chronic form of this and not the acute. And people think that when you hear certain words, then it's forever and it's not always.
Kids have gotten into it, burned it.
Well, that's interesting. And that's the thing is I think it would help.
Get it out of there.
Because I ran into another lady who's dealing with the same thing.
Okay, well, no.
Also caused by.
Not just so much as that, it was.
And.
And she thought, which at that time was taking over properties. Yeah, clearing them out and everything else. No, we're changing policy. We're going to go after the properties, sign all rehab.
Comfortable.
We're going to go out, rehab them.
Until I know it's. Okay.
Put the money back.
Gotcha. Certain words.
Which is reasonably good, but that does.
They'll tell you about their mother's laws, cousin's brother.
Taking care of.
Who.
There was another trailer right up the street.
Who had this and never got better.
And it cost a talent bank $1,000, $9200 to get them both cleared out of it.
It's just that it's not common knowledge that it could be acute.
Yes.
And we have the same.
So it might be something beneficial for people to know.
Well, that's good. And meanwhile, if there's other class action law suit against makers of bank deposits.
You've got two agencies that literally condemned it, but one's saying, well, we'll give you 60 days. There's no 60 days. This is decades worth of law.
Because I'm not the only person.
My procedure's all messed up now.
I know, I told Julie, please start coloring my front sheet again because last night when I was going through my packet, I couldn't. I kept losing it because I was going through and it's just, it'll take a while, but look at here. It's a little wonky. But I told her, I said, please color mine because.
I've got a rental property up here.
I rely on that.
It's not really relevant.
And now it looks the same as everything else in the packet, so.
But that rent doesn't come in. You're not, I'm not waiting six months, uh, six years to go, you know, you know, pay up or get out. And I think that's really, you know, the tone that has to be done because water use district, they're starving for money. Well, they don't own the lot. Better, yeah, hey, every little bit helps.
So you're only after Clyde. That would see that Kerry got a point to, and gets the, that's the man who quit, she was, she was 22, she didn't job, but she wanted to keep it. She doesn't want to be killed. What else?
I agree. Independent.
No, it's just, I don't give my hand, it's a, you should have somebody stand up and defend some common sense.
I, I, but I'm, what irritates me the most about national politics is that you either, you, you're far right or you're far left. I'm the average guy, I'm right there in the middle.
I agree, and they make it appear that everybody's far right or far left. That's the game.
Yeah, yeah, to me, it's like, no, you know, look, I don't get, they blow Washington DC right now, it wouldn't bother me one damn bit.
You know why? It should have sunk that ship in the North Pole.
But, you know, it's just, I don't want to play these political games, I don't, you know.
My, my, it's, but Washington is how political it challenges. This is an absolute bazaar to me. Everybody's got a game to play and everybody's protecting themselves. And counties and the states or your secondary churches, that's not a game.
I, I'm just saying, yeah, it seems to go, it mildly starts the election in township, okay, you know. Hell, I played that, I was, when the kids were growing up, I was on the Hot Stuff League and then I was president of the Hot Stuff League for Atwater Inn. You know, it was just like, wait a second, bro, you're talking kids baseball, what in the hell are you talking about? Oh, well, you know, everyone's got, yeah, everyone's got an agenda, I agree with that. Everyone's got a pet peeve and mine's going to be a grass seed, okay. But at the same point in time, I don't want to hear that crap.
But everybody's upset.
Well, I'll give you, look, I'll give you the benefit of saying what you think. I may not agree with you, but I'll defend the right to, you know, say it. But I'm not one of these politically correct people, hell, I'm not even socially acceptable.
I'm not accused of that myself. That's all right. You have too.
The word, the label that fits me best is iconoclast.
You know what?
Iconoclast.
What's that mean?
Somebody who smashes the icons.
Okay.
Well, see, I'm a confrontationalist. I love a good knock down drag out.
No, I, I generally avoid confrontation, I let them do themselves it, you know. That's like, there's back to Napoleon, you know, says, you know, when your en- enemy is destroying itself, he's trying to.
Back away, back away. Watch.
It's just, I don't know. Sometimes I wonder if I, you know, then you got the Democrats on the table, I can't see Bernie, I can't see Sanders, I don't know.
Well, the good thing that's happened now is their funding sources are running on around. Bloomberg and Twitter and.
So that's. I, I think that between the two of them, Bloomberg would be in a better contention, at least he's got experience dealing with. Choose easily.
Certificizes, yep.
But at the same point in time, uh, Warren Sanders, I'm sorry, you know, when you start saying, well, we're going to give away, you know, free medical. Yeah, I agree, medical has to be the prime target, you know, but. It's just that simple, it's a matter of economics. If you look at, you know, a person that doesn't have med- medical coverage.
Oh, you are.
Then what happens?
Five oh.
The delay going, getting medical treatment, the end of point of the emergency room, which is by far the most expensive, the problem to go.
Well, you know, there's always a solution to every problem and you look at the Roman Empire, you find a solution to their problem, not the Gauls or Iran, you know. If there was an answer that met every person's need, there would be no need for cemeteries.
Well, actually, there would be. Unless, they, they said they could die young, if that's the case, I should be around 2, 3,000 years. But, uh, no, it just, you can't give everything away and expect to pay for it. Because who's going to end up paying for it? Right here in this room.
Yeah. The bill comes due sooner or later. And, you know, it's like when I learned how to fly, you know, they taught us that two things you can't use on landing is the altitude above you and the runway behind you. And so you've got to make your decisions early enough that you can use the altitude above you and the runway behind you. Otherwise, and, and that's inevitably what happens is they make bad decisions, okay, now we can't do it, now we got to run into the ground. Dang, that's the only politically correct, correct solution is to just run the thing into the ground.
Crash and burn.
Crash and burn, solves everybody's problems, you know.
Yeah, but, you know, the problem is when you're dealing in, whether it's national or state politics, you letting it crash and burn, too many people are affected by that.
Yeah, there's no way to avoid that.
When you make horrible decisions, everybody's affected.
Yeah. It's like right now, we have massive tax cuts that went into effect, that I can deal with. But when you have massive spending that goes right along with it, you know, that's like, you know, me telling you, hey, sell your house today and go out and buy a $5 million mansion and then cut your income by 30%.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's the other big lie is the taxes are imposed when the money is spent, not whenever you send a bill to the people. That's the other big lie that the American public buys into.
Yeah, yeah, it just, I think, to me, I would have preferred a sales tax right on the get go. Wipe everything out, put a sales tax in there because that is a seeable tax.
Well, I, I favor a national value added tax because I figure I would get a check for that.
So. I think everybody should get a paycheck. I mean, I should, everybody gets a paycheck and you pay the taxes on that. You write the check, not the employer, you write social security, you write rate of tax, you write state tax, you write the federal tax. And every person that works, they get a paycheck, gets paid all their own taxes so they know exactly what to pay. People get, they make a thousand bucks and they get 600 bucks, 600 bucks and they never worry about the other.
Yeah, they do.
See, I'm one of those. Exactly, most people don't. Most people don't pay with pay attention with that. So I give everybody opportunity to see exactly what they, what they pay and then that, that would change people's.
Yeah, you know, to, I don't think so, I, I think that the bad problem is if you're getting a check for a thousand dollars and you know that you've got to pay your taxes, okay, you'll sit down, you know.
Most people won't.
Well, no, they won't.
Saying that, that's.
And that's where it creates.
The employer has to do that or they get penalized. Everybody else has their own opportunity to see how funded this, write that and what they actually have to give away from any check that they get.
And, you know, the thing is, is, you know, a lot of people don't realize that when that dollar is paid by the employer, you know, gross, it's actually being paid at a dollar and 30 cents. Because you have social security, you get, the employer pays. You have unemployment, you have federal unemployment taxes and.
I pay them every month.
Yeah.
So I think everybody should have the opportunity to, to, to pay that themselves so they can see exactly what the city or state or federal government takes away from them.
Well, I know that there are some people who say you should have them withhold as little as possible so that they, so that the government doesn't keep your money and give it back to you to refund, that nobody should get refund. But there are a few of us that.
That's a lot of people's savings account.
Yeah.
So, and I have no problem with that, I just, my whole thought is, is people don't realize, I've had, sorry, how much gas? You know, we talked about how the gas companies are screwing us, how much of that dollar is imposed by the government?
Oh, yeah.
46% of every dollar goes to government.
Uh, per gallon, it, yeah, about 46 cents per gallon.
Per gallon.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's a lot of money that people think the oil companies getting and.
Well, and remember when they imposed the gas tax and everybody said, oh, fill up before they impose that gas tax? And then the, the rates all went, everybody raised their rates early.
Correct. People don't realize who's getting the money when they pay, pay a bill. And so, paychecks, I think, would be the best thing, it's just, how, how much are they taking away? I got to take this much out of your paycheck every single week and then out of this profit, supposed to be profit, I've got to pay that much, but the only way you can do it is if they pay it themselves.
When you look at it, you look at the federal government, the average citizen would be better off if the federal government would just go bankrupt.
How's that?
Well, because of.
They're going there now, that's my problem.
If they just liquidated, the, the per capita debt is more.
We can't pay.
Than you can ever, if you sold your body to be burned or whatever, they would still never have enough money to pay it. So, you know, it's, it's just one of these things, like, like I said, the Roman Empire, my empire, every one of them, they always end up the same place. They end up promising more than can ever deliver, the, the game goes on for a while and then finally it breaks and everybody leaves. The, the whole thing, you know, like with taxes, people, the average person on the street, you know, he comes in, mom and dad go to work, get their paycheck, come home. They don't have the time to really look at what's going on out there. You know, if they're raising kids and they've got problems with kids, you know, that's why they elect people to look at it for them. But unfortunately, a lot of your elected officials have been there way too long. Yeah. And then when they were qualified to start with, you know.
Well, whether they were or whether they're not, it, it's immaterial. It's once they get in there, they've automatically got a stranglehold on the office. Because, you know, people look at, okay, uh, whoever is congressman or senator or whatever, whether state or federal, it doesn't matter. They, they're, they're there, they know what's going on, so I will vote for them. And it makes it really tough for the person that's got better ideas coming in. To me, it's like, okay, two years, that's it, you're done, I don't, or two terms.
So, you know, and the pardon me agrees, like, there's guys that are there 30, 40, 50 years in the state of Ohio, the way they distribute school tax dollars has been five times, state Supreme Court has said, you're wrong.
Right.
But my, our congressmen that are representatives there for eight years and they keep putting it off, putting it off, and then they're gone. So for all these years, there is a problem, it's legally been ruled a problem and the representatives, because they're leaving, they, they, I just push it off the table and I'm gone. So they, part of it is that they are too, some of them, they're long too long, but if I've got a term limit, I don't ever have to deal with that problem, I just, just shove aside.
Then, you know, make the term limit a little bit longer. Make it to the point where you have, you know, this is a bad pump, they're not doing their job.
Well, I, I keep saying that we need to have life terms, it should be from the time that the trap springs until they hit the end of the rope.
We wouldn't have anybody in there.
And we have good people, I, I shouldn't say that. We have a lot of good people, but the bureaucracy stalls everything.
Well, you know, that's sort of like what Thomas Jefferson was talking about is you need to retire the government every twenty years. And, and, you know, that doesn't change, that doesn't have to do with whether the people are good people or bad people. That's just the nature of, of the situation.
Well, there's a lot of good people out there that are trying to do the right thing. You have to acknowledge that. But the problem is the bureaucracy stops it. I mean, with, you know, on the hall, getting rid of those trailers. Well, first off, you had to get the township to go in and look at the property, file complaints with the state, with a county. The county then has to take it to a judge to get a bench warrant to go onto the property to inspect it. Then you've got to get a prosecutor that's actually going to move on it. And, and then, once that's done, they send out the local fire department, the building department, and the health department. Then they go through the property and they make their reports. And then at the same point in time, that guy has to go back to the prosecutor, who in turn has to take it to the judge, and the judge has to sign off on it, saying condemning it and, you know, do something with it. And then it's back to the township to say, okay, now you can take it down. Well, wait a second, we're going to take it down, can we go out? No, you have to go through a lawsuit to go after the guy that owns the property.
Don't they go that due process or some nonsense?
Yeah, yeah, no, don't get me wrong, I mean.
But that, and that's it, and so due process can take years or decades. And so do you throw due process away because it's incredibly inconvenient for ninety-nine percent of the people?
I think, I, I think it could be corrected.
Processes can be eliminated. I was, I'm in Aurora and we, we had, to build something could take you years. And we finally got everybody together, and fortunately it was election year, so they, they, they kind of had to do it. And so they put every department in the same room, you presented your building plan, everybody had it. Next month they came back and said, here, these are all problems fixed, straight up, rather than taking months to do each one. And we had a process and they cut down, you just build within ninety days.
And I think that's, that is what needs to be done. It's not a matter of doing away with due process.
No, no.
You need that.
Consolidated. And that's, everybody's got their own little chief, I don't want to, I don't want to step on anybody else's toes as I go through a process. So you get yours as the township, then the township gets theirs and the county gets theirs. And everybody has it and everybody is so important, that's what they.
We made changes in our zoning book. And for the better, I hope. But now, you know, it took, all right, we went through the book, we wrote up the changes, corrected the changes, presented it to regional planning, regional planning reviewed it, and okay, everything. Then I had to come back to the zoning commission for a hearing. No, wait, no, we attended. Then I had to go to the trustees for why? Why am I spending so much time for corrections that are mostly typos? I mean, you know, you're looking at, you know, it's just like right now, we put in three Ohio revise codes. Now, we didn't write the whole code down, we just made mention of it and, these are codes by the state. And now the prosecutors say you have to go back and.
Some of the things that they're trying to address, and I just wondering where they are.
Yeah, and you know, I don't know the status of that. Randy would probably, I mean, afterwards I can go down there, call Randy and check for you to see.
Welcome.
Welcome. My conclusion today is one that I've raised before, and that is, is when the meetings are being conducted, there should be no other conversations going on that interfere with the public's advantages to hear what is being said by the commissioners. And we had a conversation going on between one of the directors and one of the members of the public that made it difficult for me to hear what was being said by the commissioners. It's a responsibility of whoever is presiding over the meeting to make sure that the meeting is being conducted in compliance with the law. As I said, I've mentioned this before, that's all I have.
Mr. Fox coming on?
I need replacement. I'm hoping. Let me explain my position briefly. I'm currently on zoning commission for Atwater Township, I'm chairman. Up until that point in time, I never really realized what the, what's going on within the community between working and family and all that. My biggest concern right now is we're facing a problem, and it's just not an Atwater problem. It affects Kent, it affects Ravenna and every township around. And that is, we have properties that are far exceeding the debt that's owed in property taxes than the value of the property. There's an example, I've got a property on one eighty-three right now. It's a mobile home, it's falling in disrepair, they owe over seven thousand dollars and nobody's living there. We have properties that have gone years without being collected on. And this is money that affects my township government, it affects the schools, it affects county government as well. From what I understand, there's over two million dollars owed now for the county. Why are we not moving on this quicker? Why are we waiting five, six, seven years? You've got a piece of property in Atwater that owes over forty thousand dollars in property taxes. Why? And that's why I'm dumping it on you, because you folks are the ones that are in charge of, of getting that property tax in. We have properties that are falling in disarray that could have been stopped if you say, okay, after one year you haven't paid your taxes, we're coming after you. Get the property back, give it to land bank, I don't care. Put the property back on the tax rules as quickly as possible and be done with it. If you can't afford the taxes, you can't afford the house, period. Now, I understand people get in problems. I mean, there's been times I haven't paid my taxes, but at the, at that point in time, I paid my taxes up, I paid the penalty, and that's all there is to it. Now, I'm dumping this on the commissioners and I'm asking the commissioners to do something about it. Coordination of benefits. I've got a motel down there on Atwater that's literally been condemned by the building department. The health department gave them sixty days to clean it up. Clean up what? You are talking decades, not years, decades of rot.
Is that the flamingo?
That's it.
Yeah.
And if you really want to see something that nasty, go downstairs, talk to regional planning, they've got pictures of the place.
Oh, we saw him, we saw him at regional planning.
So, I mean, we're dealing with situations, and I'm almost positive that guy owes money to the county. You'll never get it because it's not going to be worth, it's worthless property now. If we would have stopped him a year, years ago with property taxes, this wouldn't have happened.
I thought the trustees were looking, talking to the land bank regarding that hotel and several other properties.
We are, they have talked with them, but the land bank used to, has changed their policy. They're no longer in the business of tearing down, they're in the business of taking the properties, if habitable, and rehabbing them and putting them back on the tax rules, which is fine. But you, they've gone past that stage. The thing I'm looking at is, we had two trailers on Whittlesey Avenue. One of them took over four years to get out of there. And the problem was, the land bank kept on saying, well, we're going to deal with it. Well, then they changed their policy and they kept, and they weren't. It cost Atwater Township over nine thousand dollars to get both of them torn out of there. To me, it was money well spent, but it would have, you know, again, the properties have to be reutilized. Now, I think a lot of problems comes back to, and I'm going to dump it right where it starts, right here at this desk. And that is, hey, you got a piece of property, they haven't paid property taxes in over a year, why? Now, I can understand the first half of the year, okay, you send them a little note saying, hey, you know, you, you haven't paid, you're behind. Come in and see us. That's fine. But when they don't come in and talk to you, they refuse to deal with it, then you have to.
Mr. Cox, have you talked to Brad Kremas, the, the county treasurer, regarding the properties that have that high of a delinquency with the taxes?
No, because I, I'm a very firm believer. I, I believe in talking to the in, uh, chief, not the Indians. You're the chief.
Well, and Vicki, you can clarify this, wouldn't it have to come through?
Yes, and we have no authority over our elected official, but it does go through the treasurer.
The only option is, is for the treasurer to take charge or it come through the land bank, which I know your trustees, I think, are, are looking into the land bank regarding, I mean, those are really the only two options that I know of. And apparently, do you know of any other option to get a blight of property? I mean, with back taxes, it's either normally it goes through the land bank or we foreclose on it for taxes, but.
So Brad is the only one that can deal with it? As far, because mostly this is.
That's under the county treasurer, the, the collection of taxes and of delinquent taxes. And we'd be happy to commit to you with Brad, and Brad's an elected official, he is an executive office holder, so he's not our staff.
Well, I'm not, you know, bashful, I'll pound on his desk too. The only thing I want to see is, I don't want to, I'm tired of seeing properties that are going, not just months past two, we're talking years and decades. Why are we waiting? Why do you have to wait for the value of the property to get so low and the value of the property taxes to get so high? You can't get your money out of it. I've been in business for myself, and I'll tell you right now, I didn't wait for months to get the money that's owed to me. And, you know, that money can be used. Anyway, where's Brad at?
He's on the first floor.
Okay, well, I'll go down and talk to him then.
Appreciate your service on the zoning commission, is it?
Yes.
And thanks for coming in, and I think Brad will be able to produce some insight.
He might be, he might hurt you, but that's all right.
He doesn't.
No, but, but no, seriously, he can tell you in more detail what his proper procedure or protocol is for, you know, choosing to foreclose on taxes and if not, need. I don't know.
Well, it was a procedure, it's, it's just a matter of saying, why don't you do it sooner?
Yeah. And I'm sure he'll have an answer for you.
Well, I'm sure he will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion to adjourn, so move. Second.
We'll call any?
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And then I can help you.
It's not worth the gas, it's not worth the gas to drive out here.
It is. Or you can, I mean, if I'm going to be here a while, I'll be here till dawn.
I think the president, being here bothers people, so I'll be here.
After you get the request, witnesses, the start of a new series of violations.
Thank you. All right, I'll see you later.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
If you want to.
I didn't think too long, retired.
Well, the board wants me to send everything through them. Call and see if Mr. Roberts is down there.
Okay.